We're on, Mr. Chairman. Okay, I'd like to call the Planning Board meeting in order at 7:02. Start with roll call.
James Lowery.
Tom McGinn.
Bob.
Roger Moore.
John McInerney.
Richard Knoll.
David Plann.
And Tyre Voice, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, on the agenda, we have approval minutes of sidewalk for January 25th, 2014. Two minutes of March 27th, sidewalk, March 27th, 2014, and April 3rd, 2014. Public comment on non-agenda items. We also have a public hearing. Item one of the public hearing is Paul and Road Commercial Building, conditional use application. Item two is Southern Main Marine, Plenary Site Review, Determined Completeness. Next item is going to be pending applications. Item one of the pending application will be 1362 Paul and Road Commercial Building, Conditional Use Application. Item two, Southern Main Marine, Plenary Site Review, Proposal to Remove an Existing 110411 Building and Box Trailer. Item three, AIM USA, Conditional Use Application, Determined Completeness. Item four, Pete's Bara Carver, Conditional Use Application. Item five, new applications. Under that will be Lord Boys Subdivision Sketch Plan Application for Major Subdivision. If time permits, we'll do zoning ordinance modification. Item one will be DB2 District. Item two will be Conditioned Use Standards. Finally, we'll get the planner's report and set the notes for zoning workshop date. Has anybody read the minutes of the sidewalk for January 25th?
Take the motion, we accept.
Second.
Sidewalk, January 25th.
Pass the proper?
Yep.
I'll second that.
All in favor, over there. None opposed. Okay, next one is the March 27th sidewalk. Everybody have a chance to read those?
What sidewalk is that, sir?
Paul and Moore, round one.
Yeah, that was the, that was the Lord Boys and Southern Main.
Next motion, we accept.
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed, no. Next sidewalk that took place on that date was March 27th, 2014. Everybody have a chance to read those minutes?
The sidewalk or the agenda?
The sidewalk.
Okay, we just done the sidewalk.
We did two of them.
Two.
Two. Okay. The two I moved, one Lloyd and Southern Main Marine.
We did Southern Main Marine.
So the second one's for Southern Main Marine.
Yes.
Moved to approve.
All in favor? Okay, and we have a sidewalk from April 3rd.
We have, we have, we have March 27th.
Okay. And April 3rd. Is that on March 27th?
I'll move if we pull March 27th.
The minutes, the 3rd, March 27th.
Second. All in favor? As opposed? And last but not least, the minutes of the April 3rd meeting, 2014. Move to accept. Have a second?
I'll second that.
Everybody have a chance to read them? All in favor? None opposed?
That shouldn't have been there.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anything in the public hearing of a non-agenda item that we wish to discuss? Okay, none, we'll go to public hearing. First item on the public hearing is 1362 Paul and Road Commercial Building, Conditional Use Application, the proposed construction of a 5,520-foot square foot building with a future 1,296-square-foot expansion containing low-impact manufacturing, warehousing, and retail use on a 1.96-acre located at 1362 Paul and Road, Tax Map 34, Lot 4A, in the CCS District. Lord Boys LLC is the owner, applicant, and Steve Doll, Savannah Techniques, is the applicant's agent. Anyone here in the public who wishes to discuss this item? Not opposed to the public hearing on that item. Go to the second one. Southern Main Marine, Plenary Site Plan Review, Determination of Completeness, Proposal to Remove an Existing 1,100.5-square-foot Building and Box Trailers, Construct a 6,000-square-foot retail building, an 11,800-square-foot storage building, and a 23,500-foot travelable storage yard and a 2.98-acre apostle containing an existing marine sales service and storage facility located at 2461 Paul and Road, Tax Map 12, Lot 4-Bash-2, in the BI District. PBL Holding LLC is the owner, and Paul Gatvoice is PE, PE is the applicant's agent. Anyone here who wishes to discuss that in the public? If not, oppose the public hearing on that issue. Therefore, all public hearings are closed. Next item, pending applications. Item one, 1362 Paul and Road Construction Building, Commercial Building, Conditional Use Application, Proposed Construction of a 5,520-square-foot building with a future 1,000-to-96-foot expansion containing low-impact manufacturing, warehousing, and retail use on a 1.96-acre lot located at 1362 Paul and Road, Tax Map 34, Lot 4A, in the CCS District. Lord Boys LLC is the owner, applicant, and Steve Doll, Savannah Techniques, is the applicant's agent. Pat, you want to start, do you have any comments?
We went through the sidewalk. As we recall, the board didn't have any issues. The board made several rulings at that sidewalk and some determinations, one of which is that there was no need to have any additional landscaping. Existing tree stands that were going to be left were sufficient to be parking standards in section seven, both in landscaping and parking lot sections. The other issue that was discussed was the question of secondary groundwater septic system essentially to take care of any of the etching from the cutting processes that the applicant is proposing to do with the new facility. And the applicant has, as you recalled, discussed, well, maybe he didn't discuss it, but he elected to make that an internal operation that would be self-contained in the building and that they would be actually using a recycling system for cutting, cutting the grain inside of the building and therefore there will be no discharge of any gray water and therefore the gray water system they proposed is going to be deleted from the site plan. And they don't want to keep, they don't want to install it or keep it as a reserve, they're going to go completely with internal recycling. There's one less impact on the site, is what I'm saying.
Does the internal recycling have to be noted on the plan as well, or not?
It can be noted, it should be noted on the plan. I talked to the applicant, the engineer for landscaping about that yesterday, today or yesterday? And he said he would put that on the record while I was, so that also would be in the funniest effect of the motion decision.
Does the applicant have any comment?
So, the other thing that was discussed at the last time was the applicant was supposed to give us a breakdown of costs, site development costs for the project. We had done that, the total figures, about $79,150. And he had discussed what he would use for performance assurance, and that performance assurance most likely be a tri-party agreement we've used in other situations, and we would oppose the same stipulations we do with other ones, 5% contingency, and also a certification from the design engineer upon, before CO is issued, design engineer certifies that all improvements have been done to specifications of the approved plans. They also have the usual notes about that the soil erosion control devices have to be replaced prior to breaking ground. Otherwise, the application is that the board will be reminded was thoroughly complete. They have all their state permits. The only wetland issue that they had of question had always been the vernal pool, the state, MDP, has determined and issued a letter stating that is a insignificant vernal pool of insignificant in size to be regulated by DDP, and therefore is not an issue in this site development case also, other than I know about directing the house there. In regards to buffering, and as I said, the board felt that the existing vegetation was suitable to meet the buffering standards. The trip generation is less than necessary, the site distances are at, exceed the minimum standards for 50 mile an hour road, they have the DOT driveway permit. Remember that this is a, this is a project that involves the construction of the steel building and then at some later date not to be, had not yet determined, the applicant proposed to put in a retail, a small retail 525-square-foot facility in front of it, and he has, he will be developing parking in, in the first phase in order to accommodate the needs of that facility when he gets back to that.
Comment from the board will stop with Jamie, do you have any comment?
Question about, I'm looking at the note number 10 on the plan regarding the wetland delineation. Do you know, has that been updated this spring?
I think both Jim Logan and Steve Doll were out there, they found the old flagging from when Logan had originally marked it.
Logan was the wetland scientist?
Yes, Jim Loggins did all the work there. He did all the wetlands, Steve Doll did all the new site stuff, but they worked together to put the site plan together.
So based on the note that's on the plan, it says would be verified, we should, I would think we'd get a letter from Logan saying that there, you know, saying there's no significant changes to the wetland boundaries that were delineated in the 2008, 2009 range.
You can do that if the board still wishes, but yeah, I mean, it's just a suggestion. Anything else, Jamie? No. Tom?
I don't really hear any questions, just one double check on the lighting plan, you have no lights on the side?
No lights right now. Okay. I think, I think it's good to me.
Bob?
No comments.
Marty?
The only thing is that it's not a 50-mile-an-hour zone through there. 50-mile-an-hour zone, if you're going to do the DI District. It's only a 40.
Then it exceeds excessively, because it's 500, it's 500 linear foot site distance at four and a half feet.
But they do weigh you.
I was going to say, it's like a 35-mile-an-hour speed limit on Route 101 in the CCM District, which is non-existent in terms of that.
I'll say?
Yes, sir.
No comments. Bob?
Bob. Also, that's okay, I, that's okay, I called Bob Roger earlier. I'm just, there's no problem with the MDP driveway entrance permit, six and a half years old?
It was renewed.
Was it? Okay, because here it says, what the other?
That's, I'm sorry, I should have said renewed, yeah. That was the original date.
Okay.
And that was the date that you had, the original document that you had in your, in your patent. I'm sorry.
No problem.
How does, how does, how does the board feel about Jamie's comment, any concern about those flags being, being some, some difference?
And really, the only reason I brought it up is because unless something has changed, the delineations per the Corps of Engineers are valid for a five-year period, and just wanted to make sure.
On their current plan, though, don't they delineate the same?
Based on 2009 data.
Is that what it was done?
Okay, because I thought when we were out there, there were new flags, we had the old ones, but I thought somebody had put up some new ones.
I think they tried to remarket, they were trying to go by their old flag, we had so much snow, I don't think they found many of those old flags. When we went out, it was a little better, but.
They were there a little before that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on for that, I agree with you.
I'm just, just to.
It's up to the board, how do you, do you want to make a motion on that, or?
Sure. Move that we request a letter from the wetland scientist documenting that the wetland delineation from 2009 is substantially consistent with what he's found this spring.
Have a motion, have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Yeah?
So, just clarification, so note 10 does say that, that wetland boundary should be verified spring 2014. You said that they're valid for five years?
Right.
So, has it expired yet?
I have no idea when it was done in 2009.
Marty, you have a comment?
Yeah, I want to know how long it would take, because also at the same time, applicant is probably trying to proceed as quickly as possible.
More administration, I think.
Yeah, if he don't have it, he can't start anything.
Well, I mean, that's the point. Depending on how you regulate the conditions. Put it, put it by date on that, proposal. I'd love to see some surprises.
What's your business name?
I got the VHS, I'll just snitch a little bit.
There was a letter, letter filed from February 2009. Yeah. Regarding the vernal pool. That might have been done in eight. Yeah. You know, I thought, was it, if they're consistent, and I didn't see anything out there that leads me to believe that it wouldn't be, it could be a very easy path to a no.
Are you mainly concerned with like in the truck turnaround area? Or was it just the town?
Look, I'm just concerned in general that, you know, we have, have things in place. You know, otherwise, per the plan, it says they should be verified, you know, I think we would have to stipulate a condition one way or the other that they are verified, so.
Well, I think they tried to verify.
Right. Exactly. You know, and that's.
We just know that should be pretty long.
Yeah, I mean, if they've been out there, I'm not asking they go out there again, so, you know, if they've gone out this spring.
I guess my only question would be, Mr. Chairman, would be if we, if we were to do that, I mean, would, what would happen if there was a change in the, in the wetland boundary here, and the wetland boundary would, and it would impact the proposed building that's in here, and it would exceed the 4,400 square feet?
They still get sort of bit of margin left.
They have a margin, yeah, but in the, if the line is even by five feet across 700 feet of land, you know, it adds up pretty quickly, because right now they're about, what, 3700 square feet, and you have 44, we have to go to a tier one.
Well, but from our standpoint.
Well, yeah, but that's the question, the question is, would it be sufficient to cause reconsideration, or? It might cause them to have to go get a DDP permit, wetland alteration permit.
I tend to think that the issue is that if this, if this permit letter expired after five years, it has expired, so it should be looked at. And if that involves sending a letter from the guy that went out there, he took a look at it, then let's get the letter.
Well, I brought it up as a thought to make it as a condition, that we, we spell it out so it's very clear, I mean, but if it's already been done, I would think a quick, quick closeout letter would, would suffice.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you.
Especially since it says in the notes that it shall be verified.
Yeah. So the only concern is if there was a big change, a difference, then would it impact the plan?
Shouldn't impact the plan from ours as long as, if it required to go to, and that fulfilled, I guess that kind of thing that could happen here might attract stormwater a little bit, but for our approval, it shouldn't, once they get that permit to proceed, the project would still be the same, unless they required to, but they wouldn't.
If it required, if it was required to fill all that threshold, they would have to go back to DDP anyway.
I mean, from a, from a practical standpoint, I think the biggest thing is it would be, would be to probably tighten up some slopes to maintain the, the wetland impact, and if they would have to go to a tier one, I mean, that's a very basic wetland alteration permit.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Rich?
Well, I do think some discussion, are we going to put a date or a timeframe for the letter, or prior to commencement, or others, Bill, or just leave it open ended?
I definitely think it should be prior to commencement.
Yeah.
Mike, to the chair. My question is, what do you want, what do you want staff to do in this situation? Is there a threshold where you believe that the board should come back, should take a look, or is this a staff? Is this an issue that staff makes a determination if they have to do a tier one? I mean, is there a threshold before the board becomes concerned on what wants to?
I think it should be a staff at this point. Yeah, I would want to feel about that.
Agreed.
Okay.
So can we have a vote on the motion?
With, with no timeline, I don't know if timeline makes sense, it's very beneficial to.
Just do it.
Yeah.
Well, you can't do anything without.
Right.
I mean, and that's, I may have to do it to, to work.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Let me know if there was one opposed. Okay, so what is the board's pleasure? Does the board want to take action? The night, or, sorry, any other issues or want to?
Just one. Just one. I just have a quick question, what's the business name?
Lord Boys.
Lord Boys LLC.
That's going to be the business name?
That's the owner of the building.
That's the owner of the building. So is there going to be a, a name that says, this is, what's the naming business?
Mini Marvel and Grand.
Thank you.
Bill, set with that? Okay. Uh, next item, item two, Southern Main Marine.
We have to vote on it.
I thought we did.
Well, also, we can, we can finish the.
Do you want to take action?
Yeah. Finish, we can do all of the finding of fact, conditional use, and received at the letter by the company. It'll be the same.
Right. So we should continue with findings of facts?
If the board wants to proceed that way, yes. And if you have that, that condition that just passed, if you tack on to the end, if the board what believes that everything has sufficient information and the applicant, application meets all the standards.
I believe that's the best we can do.
Okay. All right, move on to the findings of facts. Findings of facts and a motion for approval, Conditional Use Permit for Granite Connaught Fabrication Facility and Retail at 1362 Paul and Road. Whereas on February 27th, 2014, the Planning Board received a Conditional Use Application from Lord Boys LLC to construct a 5,520-foot square foot building for low-impact manufacturing and warehousing facility with a future 1,000-to-96-foot square retail use expansion on a 1.96-acre apostle located at 1362 Paul and Road, Tax Map 34, Lot 4A, in the CCS District. Whereas on March 27th, 2014, the Planning Board conducted an advertised public sidewalk on the premises. Whereas on April 10th, 2014, the Planning Board conducted a public hearing on the proposed project. Whereas the Planning Board has arrived at the following findings of facts. Findings of facts, one, the applicant and owner of the property is Lord Boys LLC. The property is located at 1362 Paul and Road, Tax Map 34 dot 4A, in the CCS District. Finding of fact number three, property is an undeveloped parcel of land where properties point acres of identified wetlands in the southern portion of the lot plus a vernal pool, and upland areas primarily covered by mixed hemlock, balsam, forest cover. A wetland is part of a larger flow stream complex that drains via a regulated stream to the northwest, northwest into Kennybunk River. Four, the applicant proposes to construct a, construct a 5,520-square-foot steel building with 920 square foot mezzanine for the purpose of operating Granite Connaught Fabricating Facility and Warehouse Storage Operation. The applicant has also requested permits for the future construction of a 1,225-square-foot retail use expansion on the east side of front of the proposed building. Five, the applicant is proposing to access Route 1 by a single driveway entrance, meeting Route 1 design standards that enjoys a 500-foot site distance to the north and a 600-foot plus site distance to the south in the conformance with the minimum distance of 50 mile an hour road as specified in section 7.7A of the land use statutes. The applicant also had received MDP driveway entrance permit for the property dated 14 2007. The applicant will be installing trade parking with 13 spaces provided for the proposed low-impact manufacturing warehouse use, and another five spaces provided in front of the future retail expansion. In addition, there will be, there is considerable paved area for facility and loading of semi-trailer trucks. Total purport is parking area is 25,930 square feet, with the proposed 5,520 square foot of the proposed facility and a 1,225-foot square retail expansion of total purport coverage on the site is 34,478 square feet of 40%, considerably less than 70% permitted in the CCS District. Seven, the Granite Connaught Fabrication Operation qualifies as a committed low-impact manufacturing use and future retail use and ancillary warehousing use qualifies as a conditional use in the CCS District. Eight, the applicant proposes an outdoor, 2,500-square-foot outdoor storage facility that is to the rear of the facility, fenced in and buffered from the adjacent properties. Nine, water service will be provided by Kennybunk, Kennybunk Port Wells Water District, and the row one mains and onsite septic will be provided by an onsite septic system. Ten, solid waste will be stored within a dumpster enclosed by a 10-foot, by 10-foot enclosure, and all solid waste will be removed by private contractor. Eleven, dust and tiddies from the cutting of granite material will be contained in an internal recycling waste water system within the building, and no dust or gray water will be discharged into the outside atmosphere. Eleven, dust and tannings from the cutting of granite material will be contained in an internal recycling waste water system within the building, and no dust of gray water will be discharged into the outside atmosphere, onto the ground or into a septic system. Twelve, the applicant has received a decrimination from main B E P dated February eleventh, eleven, two thousand nine, that the rental pool identified by the wetlands delineator, James Logan, that the rental pool number two eighty-three located in the southeastern corner of the property is not a significant rental pool and therefore require no special setbacks or protection provisions where wetlands that will be impacted amounts approximately three thousand five hundred twenty-one square foot and therefore not required a wetlands application permit. Do we need to add anything to that? Do we need to add anything to that?
No.
Okay. The applicant has designed.
Unless you want to put in, in that point there, the, the, basically the wetland side delineation is more than five years old and it should be verified before construction, unless you put it there as well as a condition.
Yeah, I put both, like. Actually, I'd like to ask a question to you.
No.
That is on page two.
Oh, yeah, that is number thirteen. Number twelve, brother, I'm sorry.
So it said wetlands delineation, and it's the A C O E wetlands delineation. Delineation. Has expired?
I would just say, uh.
Ben, it may test the fact.
Yeah.
Verification.
Yeah, it's really not.
And five, greater than five years old and therefore should be verified, line, the boundary line should be verified prior to construction.
And you can even refer back to note ten on the plan.
Okay. I'll read back to you. That was sheet two, wasn't it? Probably the two, two or three. Three.
Yeah.
Sheet two. Three. Note two as well.
Oh, all places?
Says wetland, uh, yeah. Says wetland delineation is performed on this project site, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we have to print.
Oh, yeah.
Says that the bottom wetland information is provided by the techniques and the formality and boundaries shall be verified by survey on spring two thousand fourteen. So it'd be note ten, it's sheets two and three. Okay, so what it says, the amendment would include the A C O E wetlands delineation is greater than five years old and therefore the wetlands boundaries should be filled, verified prior to construction in accordance with note ten on sheets two and three of the plan set.
Okay. All right. Item thirteen, the applicant has designed an onsite detention system to ensure that runoff from the roof site will not exceed the predetermined by condition. The plan will not generate any increased net peak runoff from the site. Fourteen, sight lighting will be provided by shielded wall packs on the building and a photometric extent depicted on sheet five of the plan set indicates that not more than point zero five women will fall onto adjacent properties. Fifteen, the planning board has determined that existing vegetation with limits of cutting and depicted on sheet three of the plan set will be sufficient to meet all landscaping and parking lot buffering standards of the CCS district. Sixteen, record plans submitted as part of conditional use application include seven sheet plan set prepared by Sebagel Techniques Incorporated and dated one twenty-seven fourteen for revisions four, nine, fourteen. All plans in the set are made part of the motion of approval. Seventeen, the applicant has submitted construction cost estimates for all site work in the amount of seventy hundred thousand, two hundred dollars.
There was, um, one correction that should be made, note five, says the minimum distance of fifty miles per hour.
I think Marty noticed that.
But it's not incorrect if it's written. Because if it's good for a fifty mile an hour zone, it's certainly good for that.
You could add enough that this is only a forty mile per hour spot, but.
What we've heard about making accurate. It's not in accordance with distance fifty miles per hour, but.
Well, it doesn't say posted fifty mile an hour. It's a fifty mile an hour in reality district.
Okay.
You were driving sixty minutes actually.
Bill, is that what that?
That, and just minor, uh, number four has construct.
Twice, yeah.
Yeah. And number twelve, your first line.
Whoa, whoa, where are you going with the?
Yeah, I was getting the construction.
Oh, yes.
Construct, they're constructing. And then number twelve, the top line says, uh, received a determination form, it should be from. It's Myers stuff.
Marty, you have something?
I have something.
I have something.
You've always expected to get a reasonable connection zone.
Conformist or conditional use criteria, after due review and consideration, the Urano Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of section nine point seven point H of the Urano Land Use Ordinance as follows. Nine point one point seven point eight one, H one, that the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories of use of neighboring properties. The uses and sizes of the structures are similar to scale, should be structures. Structures are similar in scale and scope to surrounding properties and other land uses in the CCS district.
Move to the second.
Second.
All in favor? Nine point seven point eight point two, the use is consistent with comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood and that the comprehensive plan permits such uses for CCS district as a conditional use and therefore proposed use is in conformance with the two thousand and five comprehensive plan. I mean, another motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed. Nine point seven point H three, that there is adequate safe pedestrian vehicular access to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The proposed use will not generate significant trip, oh, it looks like trip generation.
It's a trip generation.
Trip generation. The applicant's driveway site distance exceeds the minimum standards for section seven point seven point A, but the applicant has received an N D O P driveway opening permit for the proposed activity.
Move to the chat. Second.
All in favor? Unopposed, yes. Nine point seven point eight point four, there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to serve as the use. Existing onsite septic will be provided onsite and one is provided for the site by Kennybunk, Kennybunk Fort Wells Water District. The proposed use will not increase the demand for water or specific flow on the property. Gray water for manufacturing operation will be recycled internally within the facility.
Move to accept. Second.
All those in favor? Unopposed? Nine point seven point eight point five, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, smoke generated by the use that will address the effect neighboring properties in that. Noise, the nature of the business does not generate any undue noise. Dust, dust of stone cutting shall be captured by the water cooling system and proposed enclosed recycling system. Odor, this use will not generate any odor issues. Vibration of smoke, no vibration of smoke issues are generated onsite. Glare, the applicant is installing additional lower wattage wall pack or equal lights with spool cutoff shields that will not generate any dangerous glare for passing, odorous or nuisance to adjacent properties.
Move to accept.
Second.
All in favor? So pass. Nine seven point eight point six, that the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slope, soil drainage and vegetative cover are suitable for the proposed use. The applicant has proposed significant rating to the site for proposals to leave existing wetland resources, including a small rental pool intact. Free cover will retain on the perimeter of the site. Installation of the detention facility will result in no increase in the downstream peak runoff generated by the site improvements to ring a twenty-five year storm event.
Move to accept.
Second. Okay, I just have a question, that detention facility is not the recycling fund.
No, it's not. That's the stormwater detention facility. That's the one that's right on the back side.
Wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay, you have a second on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, motion, a second, all in favor? Unopposed? Nine seven, H seven, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance, no nuisance will be generated at proposed use.
Move to accept.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed? Nine point seven point eight point eight, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards are met. The applicant has met all pertinent proportions of the Urano Land Use Ordinance and the design of the proposed activities.
Move to accept.
Second.
All in favor? Or pass? Therefore, be resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Urano Planning Board has hereby approved a conditional use application of Lord Boys LLC to construct a five thousand five hundred twenty square foot building for low impact manufacturing and warehousing facility for their future one thousand two hundred and twenty-five square foot retail use expansion on a one point nine six acre parcel located at thirteen sixty-two Paul and Road Tax Map lot, Tax Map thirty-four lot four A in the CCS district, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall submit to the town planner a performance security in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, two hundred dollars plus five percent contingency to ensure the completion of all approved improvements. Two, no disturbance of soil as shisha occur on build, all soil erosion control measures specified on sheet six of the approved plan set are installed. Three, no certificate of occupancy to be sub issued to the approved storage building until a sealed letters presented to the corner cross announcer and the town planner by Sebagel Techniques Incorporated certifying that all tools that are installed in accordance with approved plans. Four, all site improvements approved in this planning board action shall be substantially completed within two years of the approval date, otherwise this approval shall be deemed null and void. Five, any change from the proposed, from the approved plan shall require supplemental review plan to the board. So approved by the.
I have a six, Mr. Chairman.
Is that?
I have a six to add.
Yeah.
Unless somebody else has one.
I, I know what you're, go ahead and list the plan.
Okay. Um, number six, a verification of wetlands boundaries on the site shall be performed by the record wetland scientists prior to construction and reported findings delivered to two and four approval by the town planner.
Anybody else have a comment?
I, in that light on number five, I would change the word board to town. Just so it leaves it open to not come back to us if it's a small.
So CSA can go staff review?
Okay. Got a note on that, Mr. Planner?
It's not, it's not.
Okay.
Would, would just a question on that, would we want to do that? Suppose there's a change other than that situation from our pool? We just told staff to go ahead and take care of it.
Right, but staff can always bring it.
Right.
The sand will change.
Well, except that we're saying.
No, we're not saying that has to stop it, Stan. I, my thought was like, like John, is that it would go to him, he'd have the ability to approve it, or if he didn't feel comfortable approving it, he could bring it on to us.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Usually, as you know, I usually ask the board about something, I have a question whether or not they in fact want to review it. The board makes a determination if it's a diminutive change enough that staff should be doing it. If it's very mild, we usually do it and I notify the board, but if it's, there's any question, I always notify the chairman.
I'm okay with that.
Accept.
So approved by the Urano Planning Board this tenth day of April, two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Chairman, who puts that?
So a second. Except for my job, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. So we're going to need some my lines to sign off on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah? No, we can do that here.
You need them right away?
I don't, but I'll leave them there. Okay, go ahead. No, I'm just asking if we got them. This one's pretty good. Okay. All right. Thanks, sir. Yeah.
You mean for the wetlands? Marty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The way that note is written, it's already correct. It's just you have to make sure.
It refers to already existing note on the line. Do we have findings of facts for Southern Main Marine?
No, we don't. Uncompleted.
Okay.
Running out of time.
All right, well, we still get, I don't get any comments from the board off the air.
Or else we can read them in.
Yep, Southern Main Marine, under recycling reviewer.
Hey, I gave you, I gave you.
That was that, the big package, the one I shared at the left. And they, and he gave it to you over here.
Excuse me?
You also got the drainage accounts, if you remember.
Sorry.
Hold it. You don't have any of it?
Yeah.
No? Get back. Should have backed. Put together just for the situation.
Yeah.
Okay. No, you can have it. I made extras because I think, I didn't put it in. You want to look at mine?
No, that's pretty good.
So send us the plan. Paul, you want to make a presentation? Give me a break. Do you have a nice small one? He has a big one, he has a big one. Let's work. Okay.
That's determination.
No, it is not, it's already, we already determined. We did that last minute, that was a, that's an art back in the, getting the agenda.
This is approved.
This is what we wanted, there's more issues happening. We can make them up as we go. So we used to do it. Nine, oh, we're working on that.
My name is Paul, I work on the hand, just took the property off, this year said also, we own this property. The last board being, um, the planning board asked for cross assessments, falls through what we goes. She said she had for the next meeting. Right now, so obviously we're going to process it for the party, so that's one thing we're still waiting on. Um, so I didn't have to write the plan and a few other things before one was make sure that the thirty foot gate gate and beyond property line, which I was in. And I sent the cross assessments, I'll send this package to coming to plans. Um, and then the third thing was, I can't remember the dog or Roger, I don't know if I got that, but I was a little concerned about the, the existing gas tank that's here now, how would you do with that? Um, so I will, that would maybe just put some steel bullets in front of it, just protect the, or the tank, but I would serve it like that. So those are the only issues that we probably brought up in the last meeting. Again, the biggest thing would be to script right, regular cross notice, so we just talk that, just give it to Ted so that we can come up with news, show you, show you the requirements for the project, so if we have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Are you going to plan? Scott, would that send the table to us again, Jamie?
Maybe I started on that side.
Ready?
No, I know.
John? Marty?
I think Paul answered all of the questions that we had at the center.
I know, we are very much in that.
We're not here to help. Do you have your drainage accounts? Okay, Jamie, it's in your book. Okay, Mr. Planner, where do we go from here? Well, the question is, I mean, you asked a lot of questions, Paul can be supplying you with more information. Are there any other questions that we have here? Are you going to keep, are you going to keep that tank in the same place? I mean, that's, that's still in your snow trail.
Yeah, you know, I'll look at it, we've got the problems, we've got it.
I don't think I had any other goal. I don't think I had any other goal. I didn't have any other questions per se, I mean, it took care of a lot of that sight walking. I don't know how the board feels about that.
Our two main ones was the apron and the tank.
That was pretty good.
There's a hole so moving between.
Paul. Paul. Yes. What is the purpose of that tank? Is that for heating the office or working there?
That tank there, or is that? Paul, that's a tank, tank just built, you said.
We put the tank behind the building, we moved right out of it. It's a propane tank to heat the workshop, so it's putting another pad down and just taking it behind the building, getting it all the way.
Paul has a good point, might want to put it right here.
Yeah, we get right out of it.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know if there was a double tap, okay, for the building, and then also for possibly for.
No, I think what we want to do is when the time comes on the front building, it will probably be on this end, but out back of the building out of the way.
You might put another.
There will be another 500 gallon tank there, yeah.
So you may want to make another of that at the same time.
They haven't put that on there right now.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, this would be, that would be.
I mean, if you're moving one, just play, play the switches.
Yeah, put one behind the workshop out of the way, so it's right out of the way, because they could get at it, anybody could hold it. And then on the far end of the new building going up, the office building, it would be on this end behind it, and there's just a buffer zone between myself and Gary Martin's property, so that's where that would be, so it wouldn't even be in a travel path at all.
Would that there be about the plow?
Yeah, I've got plowing the backside, it'd be grass.
Okay.
The whole backside of that would be grass, come out the whole front side of the, on the roof, one side, you got grass too.
Okay, okay, I just.
So the, the money deals with truck plowing that. Yeah.
I'm thinking, I'm trying to think, you know, how other people have had bigger tanks like that prior to the C-47.
Right.
Enter on for plow purposes, and because it's snowing in winter, how they sometimes freeze, that's, that's where I'm.
I understand.
Any other comments from the board?
Does that work in radiuses of the right way in?
Radiuses are fine.
Oh, okay.
No, we, actually, I was asking about the cut line, the tree cut line. Does having to show the existing tree line, where it's going to end up? Right. Because the issue always is going to be, you know, the question of buffering, you always have that buffering issue, and where, where the tree line is going to be, and whether it would affect site distances. You, you had planned, so I just wanted to make sure that we had a clear site distance through there. And also if there's any landscaping issues.
That is a $50,000 zone down there.
Yes. So it's got to be minimum 500. Now, if we verify that, what?
Yeah, I think.
You verify that. It's always kind of both directions. So if you can get these, unless there's some other issues.
I just share. The surely and the tank issues.
Jamie, any concerns about the stormwater?
No, it looks, a quick review of the, the stormwater report shows decreases and, you know, it's like they're controlling things.
And discharge velocity into the wetland, Jason Wetland is less than 2 feet per second, so. You mentioned 25 years spawned. The decrease. No. And the other thing is there will be any drainage. Another side, Paul, drainage from this site can be picked up on the other side.
Correct.
Yeah.
There's a drainage.
There is a drainage. That's what we talked about last time.
Correct.
Yeah, we hit. I mean, we'd love to make it so the site is almost approvable without coming to the planning board, you know, build the suit.
Right.
But you didn't decide to that way. You did, actually. If it's small enough.
Right.
Paul, you got a gun? No. Answered. So get that stuff to a CSN. Paul, since I've asked a question on previous applications, and yours has a note, but it didn't have a date, were these wetlands relatively newly delineated?
Oh, yeah, their last straw, I guess it was, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got to be fair.
Time flies by, I know it's less than two years, but time definitely flies.
You know, I think I do have one question, is there, is there a right-of-way easement for the road over that part of the property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. We're actually mending, you know, there's a segment of the corner, so this is a common access unit, so I defined it, this whole area is common access, into lots wanting to. And then, of course, if the drainage comes across the site.
I heard you guys talking about building later, and you, obviously.
Well, you remember the last time we had, went through this last year, that my concern was that, that the way it had been laid out was that the stormwater drainage from that development of that site would not be able to be accommodated because there was no way to get it across each other into the wetland, and therefore that would end this site undevelopable, unless they were going to put it in the ground, considering the amount of ledge that's there, that's what happened, so that was a concern, you know, that Paul would never be able to move that far, that it would be unusable, and Paul essentially pointed out the ways to that property, actually, now can be developed and can get rid of its stormwater which before it couldn't, so. No further questions, comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
So we're going to see them back in two weeks?
As soon as we submit.
As soon as they submit.
Yeah.
They're one day.
Once you know they're ready.
Exactly. AIM three. AIM USA Conditioned Use Application Chairman's completionist. Proposed application to renew expired permit to continue operation of existing 43,000 square foot solid waste recycle facility on 22.9 acre site located at 2244 Poland Road, Tax Map 12 Lot Mine in the BI District. AIM USA is the owner, applicant, and Jared Jacobs with the absence agent. Okay?
How do you not use it determined that this is a new application?
No, it wasn't, it was an old expired. Right?
Change owners, it's one of the original expired permits, so I thought we did decide this was a new.
All right, this one was on by the applicant, I, I used the same, the same. Okay, so it's a new application?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just seeking clarification.
Okay, yeah, it's a new app, I, I just keep reminding you that it's an existing facility. That's what I want. It's not like this, there's nothing out there, it's an existing facility, okay? And in a way, even though it is a new application, it is a renewal of an existing use.
Right, right.
We have an existing use, it is operating, we did not ask these guys not to operate, and what, what you did ask, I'll get you an intro. What you did ask was, you've already gotten your documentation, if you remember last time, of the survey, or the survey of the entire property, we showed, we showed everything. And the board was happy with that, but the concern was that they wanted to see some stuff that was up close in the areas where changes were going to be proposed. Then we were that we needed some landscape changes in order to meet the current standards of the ordinance, and the second thing was the applicant is also proposing to make some improvements to the, improvements to the site. Including a weigh scale and a payment system, a 1,200 payment system at the front gate. So what you have is you have a new document, it's done by civil consultants, that shows very detailed what the, the proposed changes to the site are going to be. And you'll note that there is significant landscaping, buffering the existing house that's to the north. You'll notice that the landscaping that's being proposed, they're going to cut the pavement and actually put in a a landscaped buffer strip in accordance with our BI District's regulations. So there's your new application, because that's a, that's a, meaning that's standard. And you'll notice that they have the truck scale foundation and the scale itself, the scale house and the scale system that's along the northern, well, it's, it's to the north of the existing building that's there. And then there's a, as you call, there's a canopy, a canopy through the buildings, going through that. And I shouldn't steal your thunder, I'll let you guys make your own presentation, I shouldn't be making your presentation anyway. Yeah. As you can see on display, and now, so we're just, we're trying to add one additional scale to increase efficiency in the yard, to increase traffic flow, to make sure we don't have any backups on the Portland Road. The scale shafts in the middle will be there, developing vehicles coming in and out. Well, we're also proposing a RadCom unit on the inbound scale, that'll be to detect any radiation, we've never had any issues in the past, however, that is a concern nationwide in that scrap, so we're going to install that, and then just install one additional scale for traffic. So essentially, nothing's going to change here, I mean, we're going to be able to increase the, the speed of each transaction by having two scales close to one. And your payment system? The, the payment system we're doing, what would? Are you going to deal with that? Yeah. Okay. We're not going to have that. I was looking for that. That, that's why that's. I must, I must be missing. No, we took that off, we're just having one extra scale in our RadCom system. Yeah, I like the RadCom system, that's, how exactly does that work? It's just a basically joint down your com kind of thing? Yeah, yeah, so any vehicle that passes through that, it scans that vehicle, and its contents, and it detects any radiation as soon as, if it, if that's identified in the state of Maine. It's just a precautionary measure for us.
Are you going to notify that it's there?
Yeah, we have one in Bangor, which.
I, I mean, Bangor is Bangor, I'm saying here, you're going to notify.
We'll follow all the rules and regulations.
I don't know what the rules and regulations are, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, once it's, if something like that's identified, then we have to find the point of origin, so we contact the state of Maine, the Radiation Council, we let them know that vehicle stays there for up to 48 hours, pick them up, and they'll find the point of origin for that, that that's appropriate.
Well, what I, what I'm still asking is, as you drive in, you're going to turn around and say that there is a red unit there? I mean, that's what I'm asking is, is that.
There, there will be a RadCom system when you come on the scale?
Yeah.
Yes.
And so if it goes off, the vehicle will remain inside the yard until DDP is notified and the proper authorities, that vehicle will stay there until it's cleared, all the materials taken out and shipped accordingly.
I think Artie's point is, they know that they're being scanned before they go.
Oh, yeah, they'll be.
That's what I'm trying to get at. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
Just because you have it in Bangor.
Yeah.
I don't know what it is.
Yeah.
And just somebody seeing it for the first time.
Yeah, that's a good point. There'll be a sign that says radiation detection, and when they come through, and the other thing, it'll go off when they're doing more than five miles an hour, so it also slows vehicles down with safety, the folks in the yard, so the folks would have to go back around and be retested to make sure it didn't go off because they were going too fast. So it's a, it's a two-way, so it for us and in the safety arena as well.
Are you done, Mark? Yes, sir. I noticed you have a drive-through on the building, you said, actually, how are you going to do like the copper and all of that? It'll come through the scale and then drive through the building.
Yeah, right now, that one way is going in the opposite direction, right?
No, there is, there is no drive-through.
There is.
And back up to it.
Okay.
Well, that's been changed since I was there.
And that's, last time I was there, it was don't drive through the building either.
Yeah, there is now, but the one way is going in the other direction, that's why I asked the question.
That's good, are there, are there any regs that we can have on that, drive-through of the building? Is there anything?
No, we don't, we do not.
It's still a drive-through.
It's not, we, we have fast food. Actually, we have a drive-through ordinance that I heard over the weekend, but. It has not been promulgated, so it doesn't apply to these guys, and it deals with queue length. You have a queue length and radiuses, but I think it's more for like McDonald's, the movies.
Yeah. Outside, outside around.
I don't see an issue here, I don't have a problem with it, but I was just wondering if we have regulations that we need to pay attention to.
Well, as before written, if it ain't there, not allowed.
No, we don't have, we haven't instituted that yet, Marty, that's omitted uses, and we still don't have that in place yet.
Excuse me, Jared, when we had, prior to this, we had to add names on it because somebody wasn't allowed to put a transportation place onto it one, because it was not permitted use, because it wasn't written in.
The couldn't, the code enforcement officer in that situation cannot pigeonhole it into any of the existing uses, that's why. Because it's up to the CEO to make that determination, and he could not do that, so.
Where, where is the process thing for, I guess you would call them hazardous materials, oil and such? There used to be an area that collected oil, like when you had your cars.
We have, there's a car rack in the north end of the yard, and there's tanks there, there's also fat coal filter in the place, there's booms, it's well-meaning, but it's still in same spots in the north.
Same spots, yes, I didn't see them on the map, yeah.
They're on, they're on the big map.
You know where the big baleer is up in the north end of the yard? It's just to the right of that.
I know where it used to be, so it's in the same place.
Same place.
Right, but it's not on this map, right?
No, it's, it's on the, it's on the, on the old review map that you have.
Oh, I see, no, that's a storage shed.
No, you have. I don't have any instructions.
No, because it was.
There's something over here.
Remember the big map that was done?
Yeah.
Well, it should be indicated on the plan that we have. Right, it's a plan that we've eventually approved.
Okay. All right, so you're going to want them to sign both of these?
Are you talking about this admiral rack?
Yes, the admiral rack.
Right.
It's the actual name of it. Yeah, Jared's had a good point, it's not on the plan.
It's shown on the existing conditions plan.
Yeah, it is. The big one there.
Yeah.
That one.
Remember this one? These guys have it.
Right.
I thought we, yeah.
We all have to get that.
That's what.
We can get one.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have the proposed plan.
Yeah, we do.
Well. Is that today's?
This one's proposed.
That's today.
For whatever reason, we have this one.
Yeah, you had that at the last time, the last time, when you guys.
I was. This is.
Yeah, I didn't get it, don't worry.
When they, that was, you looked at that and you said that's not, that's not figuring out, you know, it doesn't show that this thing.
Yep.
So that's when I asked these guys to come up with a second, a second, which is this one here.
This. This was in the sample.
Okay, but this one doesn't. The rack, the, where do you have the brand? Is this thing, this thing?
That's the existing.
Where's the.
So look up.
You know where that is?
I don't know.
Well, first of all.
Do you have any different ideas?
Projects that you just approved, guys. Okay, so we. Go and get this out of there, let's see what you just approved.
You just approved?
So maybe, no, that was a. This is a big map, and then there was the site.
This is a big map, and then there was the site.
This is my first time here.
You guys looked at it last, this is the last condition, that's the freaking one.
He can read it?
No, no, no.
Oh, connect.
No, it isn't, it says civil consultants on it.
This one, you guys...
You guys got this over. We were looking at some of those, and the last time, last time, it was like, it was two sets.
December.
Yeah, that, that set.
But, but since then, but since then, I don't think we've actually had a meeting with these people.
Uh, no, you were given the, the site plan, the overall site plan, and they were going to come in and they had shown, they wanted to put in the scale, and I recommended that they give the second map, which is the detailed map that shows it on the suitable scale for, that shows the scale, the landscape changes, all of the changes that are proposed as part of this new application on this second sheet. The first sheet was the sheet that you folks asked for the overall view of the entire site, and that's what this was. And this was a sealed sheet of the overall site, and that handed that out immediately.
Well, I remember when we asked for it, but I don't...
I did not put it in a package, I handed it out immediately.
It was after the cycle.
Okay.
This was before cycle, I think.
No, we asked for it, we asked for it after the cycle.
It was because of the cycle that you asked for it.
Okay, so we have the topo on there, we have locations...
We have location, topos, everything. And you also have the, you have the DPP.
Now, this was accomplished January thirty-first, twenty fourteen.
Yeah.
It's Morgan Steel...
That was one of their former names.
Right.
Yeah, but it's dated.
It doesn't matter, it's now a formal one. In survey world, you'll find that, now a formally in all these situations. The, what had happened was that Morgan Steel, I'll give you a rundown of this, Morgan Steel, who were thought was the original owner, then they basically sold that facility to One Steel, and One Steel was selling it, the product, the operation to another operation called AIM, American...
Iron Mill.
You got your mill, right?
Iron Mill.
Uh, Iron Mill, I understand. American Iron Metal, and so that transpired. You were waiting first to do your due diligence and get your permit before the sale occurred, but AIM decided they would just go ahead, and they felt confident enough in the, in the project, in the site, and its viability, and its record is such that they felt they could just buy it, and they would take over the permanent process, and so that's what's happened. Same personnel, just different name. So, the name should not be in confusion. So the maps that matter in this situation are the, the map of the entire site, which the board requested, and then the detailed map, which the board, which the staff requested so the board would have a clear idea of exactly what the changes from the existing condition that are being proposed by the applicant are. So, you have just two maps, all of the other maps, I'm the only one to keep a record of whom you can throw those out. The other maps are not as important as, these are the two maps which are going to be making the decisions based on. So, John, were you asking about the location?
Yeah.
You see it right there?
Yeah, right.
Which is considerably different than the app, than the map that we had before. So this was, this was, this wasn't just a futile exercise, this was something the board needed, and I believe Robert, the owner's, wanted as well. It's a good, very good resource, you can see where everything is. It's time dated now, so for renewals of their permits in the future, now you have a base and the planning board will have a base from which to, when staff goes out and does the review, it says there are no changes, we have that base and we're making confident decisions based on it.
There's a question, on, on the south side of, of the building, you have a trailer ramp, and not clear if the fence blocks that access. Will there be a fence on, on the south side?
There is a fence, they have a trailer parked there for later than loading, but it, there's a gate.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, so all that cleared, the way it's shown, it looks like, so that, says trailer and then the next is ramp, so is that, indicating a trail at the end of ramp?
Yeah, both of them are portable.
Both are portable.
They ramp up into the trailer.
Right, both, both are movable, but they just show on the map, that's where they store it and load.
Okay, so the fence does go out, which makes, but it's, it's fenced up, open a gate?
With the trailer there now, there's no gate, but when the trail is gone, there's the ability to have a gate.
Okay.
I've got a question about the stormwater retention pond, is, is that adequate for current conditions, have you looked at that at all?
It has been renewed, that license has been renewed by DPP.
In fact?
Yes.
And there's actually two ponds, because it's on the south.
And there doesn't appear to be any, you know, appreciable change in color or anything like that?
Frozen.
Yes.
More than less. I said witches, that's what I said, I just, I didn't finish it. I didn't finish it, so that's a thought. From the civil consultants, and all of these design standards are for the scale. I hope somebody understands all these words. I did recall it there.
I wanted to make sure you had everything.
Yeah.
It is standard, but I did ask them to provide full details, and they did.
They did?
They did.
Anybody have any questions on lighting? I know it's in the kids on the plan.
There was no change, right?
Yeah, it looks like it's huge.
All right. Is there any, there's new lighting?
We, they installed new fixtures because it's somewhat broken.
So the, the, in, in the south, that south east corner, the utility pole with light-on pole is an existing light?
I believe so.
Yes, we haven't had any...
There's been no other than chin light bulbs, fixing the crap ones.
Yes, I didn't notice any new fixtures, was I wrong on that?
No.
Are all the lights cut-off fixtures, do you know if they're cut-off fixtures, shields, do you know what they would be? Were you open, how do you just open bulbs, or is there a fixture?
Shield over the top of it.
I believe there's shields, we had, we had rods electric down here, get them up to tow whatever we needed, so I believe there's shields, but we'll check that out.
Go buy it tonight?
Yeah.
Maybe turned, maybe turned off, because they don't need the light, everyone.
Yeah, might be, Marty, it might be around, might be on his own.
We also had a bush inspection last year too, so they were no...
Ocean.
Ocean.
Okay. How do you feel, gentlemen?
Warm and pleasant.
I have a question, but I think I know the answer. Do you have a RadCom unit, you're going to notify the town if that sucker goes off, or you're just going to tell the state?
State.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That's what you don't...
We don't, we don't...
Let me ask you, what are you going to do about it?
Leave town.
He's going to say, I'm not going to...
I'm going to leave town.
I mean, in a lot of those situations, they may have very low levels, although you're naturally...
Some things are sensitive, I mean, that's how sensitive...
So you can get very low levels of radiation as you can, I mean, very natural in metals.
I feel bad for the people that have gone through cancer, and then they have to take a load of metal down there and set off the machine.
And they have to find their, their car.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I didn't even tell us, they don't want us to have the town phone here.
Are you amazed, you know, of course not?
No, it is not.
So...
Any other question about the board, comments?
I mean, all, all we basically are doing is...
Is it in Germany completely?
Yeah, well, we can actually...
No, you can't, you gotta do public hearing.
You got it there?
Yeah, yeah.
Playing this thing...
Remember, it's a new application.
It's a renewal of a permit, but a new application.
This thing you...
So we've got to do a public hearing, look like you have to do a guarantee.
Is, is this application complete?
Yes.
Mister Chairman, I would move that we deem the application complete.
Have a second on that?
I would say no.
On the favor?
No.
Can we need to schedule a public hearing, can we do it at the next scheduled meeting? Mister Plante, do we have anything that's April 14th?
You guys always put me up against the wall on that, you know that, because I have to do ten days notification, and then I've got, and I have three days to notify the paperwork, which means if I don't do it tonight...
Can we ask the applicant, there's no, there's no issue with delaying it to three weeks or four weeks, the public hearing?
Well, they're operating rather fairly, right?
They're operating.
I'll tell you, right, John.
The reason I'm asking that question, whether they're operating one week or two weeks, or one month or two months of a permit material.
Yeah, so let's not make it for the April twenty-fourth, maybe we're going to have to make it for...
Maybe.
Maybe.
If that's all right with you guys, or is that fourteen?
Would it delay our construction?
Yeah, that could affect construction.
I will tell you what you're doing on the twenty-seventh, you're going to do your final, your final determination of all the zoning stuff. Can we just squeeze into the next two weeks?
I mean, if you guys do it tonight, if they do it tonight, then they have a ten-day notice.
Oh, he's not working it, you know?
Yeah, he's...
You can't do it before the twenty-fourth anyway.
Yeah.
These two, sir.
Just so we move along, I mean, we could do it quickly on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, let's do it. All right, so I'll start the public hearing, I'll go back and notify, let's move to get that.
Sorry, who was your second to your motion, Mister Plante?
I don't know who's second.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, moving right along. Item four, Kate's butter cow barns and dish reuse application, propose to construct a six-bedroom, four-hundred-square square foot dairy barn on the site of Kate's homemade butter, high-performance demonstration facility on thirty-seven point eight-two acre cross located at eight fifty-two Uptown Road, Act 55, Lot 9A in the Harford District. Daniel and Karen Packery are the owners, and Lucas Packery and Allison Larry are the applicants.
I need to recuse myself.
No pain.
Recuse the butter?
Is this yours?
I think I got two.
No, you brought...
Okay, I'm just trying to get rid of the earpiece.
I'll let you weed off, Mister Plante.
All right, gentlemen, we had a meeting, we had a sit walk today, mandatory sit walk up at the site. Board had an opportunity to walk the site, this is normal time when we, the board discusses any issues they saw, or any concerns they had, or anything the applicants need to address, and so I would open it up to the board, I will say one thing, I need that big plan, I don't have a big plan, still working, I have to, I have to do math in my head to convert, and that's, that just causes so many troubles. Okay, so if I could get a big, big plan set, full-scale site, I'd appreciate it. One thing I will say, that the applicants did speak to the fire chief, there was concern last time about moving water up to the hay barn and protection, protection, the board needed to provide fire protection for the, for the barn and the milk barn and for the hay barn, they did meet with the fire chief, I gave him the written letters, but he did come by and sit down and go over it, and he did discuss the fact that he felt confident that with that arrangement up there, that the fire department could in fact deal with the dairy barn, the hay barn might be a loss, but most hay barns are, that's a loss for this weekend, but the, they would do, they would be able to provide adequate fire protection. What was really interesting is, one question I'm going to ask you folks, that, that access from Drew's, Drew's Mill Road, is that something you keep open to the, to the water?
That's what I usually do.
Man, that's a much better access. It's not great for laying hoes, because you're going to have to do it from Phil's Pond, but you can do it from Phil's Pond, laying that way, I mean, I think they'd really much rather come down.
Laying across from Phil's would be a lot better than trying to come up that hill.
Yeah.
You'd pump it up that hill.
Oh, yeah, well, and you'd be also really, run through National's pumps up to get that out, do the friction losses, so, yeah, that, that was an eye-opener going out to see those sit walks pick up.
That's certainly a better option than what you have proposed, probably gravel all the pasture, for sure.
Yeah, I think it would be much more well, but again, the friction loss issue, actually going to be shooting more downhill, so it's actually to their advantage and to the partner's advantage, I'm sure it won't just get too much, better for the nozzle, whoever that fellow is.
Nah, tap it down at the truck.
Good enough, fully confident. So, I don't, I don't know what we can do about that, whether we can make that as, as part of the fire protection strategy, but if you, if you're going to keep that open, I think that's really to your advantage, and I don't even think the chief knows about that, I think you love that, follow that one. That gives them two sources of water too, which is fabulous, you can take it from two sides, as we talked about. So, there's, there's one big advantages to that, to the site one. Any other issues? I'll get the board's over when you were out there.
I didn't see anything. You guys, Marty? Huh?
I didn't see anything.
Yep, and D, um, DPP has indicated to the applicant that the drop of eight feet in the, the location of the building, or drop in the elevation of the building, you may recall that we pointed out at the last meeting, that the building was on an eight, at its tallest point, an eight-foot-tall retaining wall, and the applicant was, was a little disturbed by that because of the costs of fill involved, and plus the engineering to do a drywall, eight-foot wall, of course, engineering, instructional engineers, so they proposed to take it down eight feet, and I brought up the issue of how that might affect stormwater velocities and capacities, and they ran it by DPP, and DPP didn't have any other concerns on that. So, BH2M has re-engineered the site with that, that drop, as you heard Lucas talk about on the, on the site, and so there's no real impact from that, that change, as we talked about at the last meeting. So, stormwater works, DPP's happy, they're happy because they're saving a lot of money on fill, you know, I feel there. Everything's happy.
So, do you all, do you guys know what the finished floor elevation will be?
It would bound the new plan, right, on the east line?
I got the one from last one, and that's what I'm just trying to assess, whether that was the new one or the...
That's the new one.
Okay, all right, because that's what I'm looking at, and don't see anything real outwack.
Nothing fuzzy?
Oh, it's some fuzzy things, but...
Nothing fuzzy?
No, no wack.
Does the board, I, well, this is, this, we'll discuss this later, but sometimes the, the eleven-seventeens don't...
Oh, yeah, no, I'm seeing here in the revision block, we're about at the finished floor, so, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm seeing here in the revision block, we're about as finished floor.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Any other comments on the board?
The only thing I could say is, even though that you've had a discussion with the fire chief, okay, and whatever else done, for the record, we still need something in the file, instead of just talk.
Yeah. I agree. I agree.
That was gonna be my comment.
There's a selectman, we can ask him to be.
My comment is just a conversation for your record, you should really need to have some of that.
I'll make sure that the chief provides written record for this in all, in future, even if it's a one one. So. I will get that for the, you got the next meeting, before the next one.
You can always ask the selectmen to talk.
I'm quite sure the selectmen, the selectmen have no authority over what the town manager will do. They have authority over the town manager.
And where we stand on the application's constitution.
Well, you have to make a determination of completeness now.
Is it complete?
Do I think it?
Yeah.
I think it's complete, what do you guys think?
Well, I think it's complete from what I've seen, but I wanted to make sure that you thought it was complete.
Yes, I do.
You want to have a motion?
A move that we deem the application complete.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Public hearing scheduling.
Twenty-four.
You're probably start that meeting early.
And I can say that, because that won't be.
You need ten days, right?
Ten days for the other one?
No, I need thirteen days. I need ten days, it's gotta be published ten days prior too. And then, but I need three days lead time with the paper.
So in other words, it has to be in tomorrow?
Right, no, I'm just gonna take the day off tomorrow, because I'm told I've got too much OT.
Say why?
That's just like. He just thinks it's a benefit management.
Need a motion from someone on the board here.
I, if you want it, and we're gonna have the other one, the other public hearing, the twenty-fourth. Same amount of paperwork has to be done for that, and as we'll do it for this one too.
Just so the board knows, that that is your last, that's your drop dead date for going to public hearing, for determining, completing all of the zoning ordinance stuff. You have to approve it that night in order to make the public hearings you need, in order to make the selectmen's warrant to go to town. You have a lot of work to do.
Well, we're gonna be meeting before then, so I mean.
Well, that solved that problem, one time.
One time.
One time.
Hi. Unless you need more than once a week?
Okay, questions, Mr. Planner? We have a public hearing, and we limited it to just that, and no one from the public has any comment, and we pulled the public hearing, but we have to do anything beyond that evening?
Yeah, you have thirty days to approve it.
We have thirty days to approve it.
Yeah, public hearings are detailed.
Yeah, we can do a public hearing in more about.
It's Tad's work, and he has to do it before he.
Right.
You know, I mean, what's all those M O Ps to the mail?
You got a sponge? What should we use?
Is it, will the dog still be taking the mess?
He has better taste than that.
Then add flavor to it.
And I get a motion from the board.
I did.
And I'll second it.
All those in favor of having a public hearing on the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
Unposed?
Just to be it. Okay.
You got a scrap pile too. Yeah, I might use it too.
Don't scare me.
Come on, I'm gonna go get that.
Radcom's facility. Okay. Thank you.
Alright, goodnight.
Rest item and public planner of the applicant is not available this evening?
The applicant is not available this evening.
Will that be table?
Well, I'm gonna hand out his application, he asked. If you could take a look at it, it's a sketch plan, which means.
Is there any difference from the first time around?
A little bit. What it got is a, is a.
Is it any drier?
No.
It's no dryer. After you get dry, it's.
Cut. You haven't been out.
You haven't been there yet.
It doesn't rain for ten years.
Yeah, but you bring your hippos. Bring your hippos on the dry weather.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I like the, with those motions table this, I think that's just sort of a thing with the language of zoning ordinance.
Well.
Yeah, because I don't think, are looking at it, are discussing it, won't do it, I think there's nobody giving answers to questions.
Given, given the applicant's.
Cluster one?
Like the presence, and I'll second that.
All in favor? Any opposed?
No, you need the cluster one.
The night?
This is dated seventh fourteen, two thousand and eleven?
That's interesting that he just gave me.
A one one.
No, he gave me. Gave me one.
Give me one cluster.
Oh.
I got some. Who wants the cluster version?
Okay, gentlemen, item. Six. Those zoning ordinance modifications, DB two district, discussional action, and we need finalization tonight.
No, we're not gonna get it tonight.
Why?
Because I ain't finished it yet. I have to do all the rest of this stuff, plus, you know what, guys, I know you laughed about it, but I couldn't work last weekend, I wasn't here, so. I'll tell you what I have done. I guess my question to you, I didn't expect this to ever get to that, I'll be here all night on this stuff. What I've, what I've done on this is I have incorporated the residential in, as you asked. I don't have any other. It seems to work. You don't have many really big problems with it, but it, it's a little dodgy. I have to have two tables to put in the. The incentive. My only concern was, I was really a little concerned that you can't, you have to have two acres for three to, thirty-three to fifty percent, because that's what we decided originally on. Well, I, we're gonna stick with that. I guess my real concern on it was the NDD, to be very honest with you. I've given some second thoughts to the NDD.
English.
Net development density. And I'm not sure how to get around that, because the, because of the site. It's got a lot of, lot of wetlands in it, and the sites, we're gonna have a lot of lost land, a lot of lost density, because we're. Whether we do it in the zoning, or whether we do it in subdivision, we have net development density, which means you can only do the density by according to the NDD process, which means you take all of the wetlands, or hydro soils, or steezer slopes over twenty-five percent, and fifteen percent of the lot, or all of the proposed parking area, and that is immediately subtracted from the gross acreage of the parcel. And then the density is based on what the net developable land is. Now, we put net development density as truth and advertising on our, in our, in our table, in that table. The issue is that that is giving away that, that we don't have a lot of lost land. Sure.
Alright, let me ask you this quick question then. Is it, how much lost land is it, to even turn out, no, to even consider a DB two? If you're losing that much, is it a lost cause?
Well, I don't think it's a lost cause.
Well, I'm going by how.
Just the density issue. I think it's the density issue.
But, that's, after they do their plans, they've got their fill, they've got the increase to what they want, what's left. I mean, you subtract, you subtract out all the.
The bad link.
The bad link, but that would exclude, if they required three thousand square feet of fill for their project, their net would have been determined not including that three thousand if they had gotten committed to do that, if they needed it, most of the time you don't even need it anymore. So I don't. We're either gonna have enough room or they're not, I'm not sure what to do. Issue, I mean, if it, if it is undevelopable.
Maybe part of what's. Well, it's not undevelopable, remember that a lot of times what they'll do is they'll incorporate most of the land into wetlands and put a small piece. You'll see it on, actually, that subdivision I just gave you, give you a small piece that is actually on good land, and the rest of it's junk. So most of the lot is junk, and then there's smaller islands, that's not gonna really affect it, but it's just, it just affects density, I'm just wondering for it. Well, because we started off at two acres, and we go down only to one, we go to two acres, one and a half, and one acres. Can't go below one. You know, we really can't, so we're, we're probably gonna get some squawk coming. But, you're right, you gotta stick with it, I mean, there's.
If it's, if it's laid out in the subdivision, there's really no getting around this.
Well, the only thing to do it, yeah, see, that's what really bothers me, we're actually not fulfilling the entire subdivision, because the subdivision, any, any subdivision that is involved, and remember, we're talking about, we only allow residential development now if it's part of a mixed use project. But it's still gonna be a subdivision by law, by state statute, division of three or more, creation of three or more of the parcels is going to be called a subdivision. Our subdivision, its standard, requires us to add parking, or fifteen, the parking area, the road area, to the NDD, which is further reducing it, so. I'm actually thinking of if there's any way we can bypass that question in the D D.
Well. You want, you want a quick solution?
Quick solution is that it doesn't apply to, to the N D one and D two, D B one and D B two district.
Yeah, and in the, in the definition of your NDD, you just don't include your drive and.
We use NDD instead of net residential density, which is what we have in the ordinance right now, which is NRD, net residential density, we use net development density. I think that's another way we can do it. It's just a supersede. Number two, so there's that, number two, the performance standards, I've been working on that, because we never finished our performance standards for the N D two, in case you didn't remember. And that's what I was trying to get done partially today. I will tell you that, by the way, the comp plans stuff is all done. At least that got done, and that's advertised, so. But the, the question is, I'm gonna have to bring in something to you next week, in which I'm gonna make a proposal on, on what all those performance standards are gonna be, and it could be pretty close to what's in the D one, except we won't have architectural standards, because we read on that. And we'll, we'll have a little bit, the signage will probably be a little bit more than what we have in the DB one.
Well, you can't see it from the road anyway, so it better be some more.
Well, yeah, but remember, Marty, you can see it from driveways and roads that are interior. Because you can't see it now, you're not gonna see it anyways.
Well, you aren't gonna see much over eight feet anyway, if that's gonna be the height of your sign.
Well, that's.
And you're gonna just blow, if you got the winter time, you're just gonna snowplow it up, so I mean, you won't see it any.
As long as they have a good website, don't worry about the signage, Marty.
You don't have to, you're not in business.
The, I will bring those in, I will send those to you, because this weekend I will be working, because I am here this weekend, so. But I was wondering, we're gonna probably set for certain things in the signage, it's gonna be the same as in the DB two, or DB one, unless somebody's got something different.
Leave signage out for now.
Well, you get.
Because you have. The reason I say that, the reason I say that is, you have not had any comments from any of your business people. You're just going blind, and you have had no comments on anything else?
It's not like they couldn't have come and said something.
The hearings.
The only one that I hear complaining about signs is you.
Okay. You're fine?
Right? I don't know.
The rest of the board. No one else brought up the issues.
Most of them don't even know what's going on.
Whose fault is that, Marty? They know that they have meetings here, right? They know that they're working the ordinance, you guys are working the ordinance.
Fine, 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 you wanted to blow up at you, that's all. I haven't said anything, because one time or another I was accused of saying something to bring any of the business people in, so I haven't said a single thing, okay? Otherwise, most people in this town don't even know this is going on. Truthfully. Paul? You, you, you were here a long time ago. Did you really know this was going on?
Not really.
Thank you.
Well, I was kinda sick for a while.
Yeah, but still.
Meetings are all posted in advance. I know that they've had meetings, but you know.
The agendas are posted on the website there at the town hall.
Well, they're also distributed to whoever asks.
I mean, there's a distribution list. You know.
Okay, let's move on to me, so you're gonna have that ready for us for next Thursday?
Alright, we have to have a meeting, it's Thursday.
Okay.
I have, what I've done so far, I have done the performance standards for drive-through, I've done a performance standard for congregation care facility, done the performance standards for tourist center, the tourist center parking, and then talking to the code enforcement officer, obviously that, that parking situation is one in which that's a off-ten, that's a hand grenade, and I'm in dispute with that.
Well, I'm afraid of that, I don't know if the proposal for that is to allow buses to sit and idle there or not. I'm afraid that's what it could become, if that's the intent, I can call them, that neighborhood will be opposed to it.
I've already heard that.
So that's why the provision there is no, no vehicles shall be idled. There is technology right now, if you wanna do something like that, there's technology right now that will, you can. Guys, do you guys remember? Drive-ins?
Mm-hmm.
Of course you did. And you were here too. But drive-ins, there are facilities right now where to prevent idling of diesel, diesel equipment, you actually take a heater off, off a pedestal. It's like a pedestal that you have, either a drive-in or a pedestal you have, a service pedestal at a marina, or a service pedestal at a campground, and it's electric, and you just plug in, you just put in your.
Yeah, they have them with all the truck stops.
Exactly, they have them with all the truck stops, and so if that's an issue, that's what you do here. If you wanna put them in, fine, terrific, there's no idling. And the thing I was gonna ask you also, is I hate these, I hate renewable permits, but I'm a little concerned about this concept sinking the whole townhouse corner district, because in the past, they're making any kind of tourist facility, if they have public, if they have parking for anything besides cars, paid parking for anything besides cars, that it's a, it's a three year permit, renewable.
Well, why don't you do it as a separate warrant? You can have, you can write it so that it can be separated.
So if it goes down, it goes down alone, it doesn't drag everything else down?
Yeah.
That's a good idea, because the rest, I think, is all, is, I think favorable, but that one thing, I think would be, would be the thing to fill that. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned, I'm not sure, I was considering that, I was wondering if you guys wanted to go that direction, because. I wanted to link them all together, so we didn't divide districts, you know, so we wouldn't have one group of people that like this, that don't like that, and get that kind of warfare going on, want it all in one, everybody wins something. But, I'm getting really concerned about the feedback I've gotten on this. So, I wrote it in that there won't be no idling, and that facilities to provide heaters and cooling units, you know, we'd be committed, but no idling, and this also applies to RVs as well. you know, would be permitted, but no idling. And this also applies to RVs as well, trucks and RVs. And it's heavily landscaped and paved. And the facility is a minimum 1,000 square feet and it's gonna have bathrooms and, uh, a display area for, um, giving out materials, you know, maps, providing materials for, you know, explaining the region. You're gonna have a tourist center, it's a tourist center. You're gonna provide those, those uses and that other mixed uses like food service or vending machines would be available inside the building. So the building can be any size. I, I did, I put it up to a maximum of 5,000. 1,000 to 5,000 square feet, but I said it's gonna be a minimum of 1,000. You lay out a bathroom, you know, female handicap bathroom, then a display area, and then you add in, you know, let's say a food vending area. You get, you get about 900 square feet altogether with the camping and stuff like that. So I figured we should make it a minimum to make sure we just don't get a little kiosk with a, you know, a scarecrow's bar and we attack.
Just say, you could have, most tourist areas, you have more than just one bathroom.
Absolutely, but that's just the minimum requirement.
What, what, do you have a proposal for where this place might go?
We've had some strong suggestions that they wanna do this kind of facility, but it's gotta-
Not on Route 1?
No.
Not on Route 1?
No, no, it's to turn a-
On the Center Road?
No, on the, uh, on Lock Cabin Road.
With the end of Senate.
Lock Cabin Road.
On Lock Cabin Road? Down by the, uh, four five, you see it?
Yeah, down.
Oh, wait, yeah.
Four five.
The end of Senate, where, where it comes out, back out to Lock Cabin.
Yeah, the, the four corners here that they used to call Townhouse Corner, historically called.
By Farnsworth's Road.
That area in there, up, all the way up to John Clough, you know where John Clough Road is? You can get from John Clough Road down to the, uh, down to the town border and then along the Rundle Road over to just before, uh, the crosses Goss Mill. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a sort of a, an elbow and it's a neighborhood commercial district, but this was, this was really pushed pretty hard and so we're trying to make it stay in scale. We had like three, two public hearings with the neighbors and all the property owners down there. And the one thing that did come through is that they didn't mind that they returned a mixed use, which historically was a mixed-use district, you know, with commercial and residential. And they, uh, there was support for that, but they, they wanted to make sure it stayed scale, you know, same scale as, as it is now, you know, it'd be more like current, and the model that was given to me was Cape Porpoise, which-
Is that looking in conjunction with the port?
Yeah, I think basically trying to extend some of that, that port, um, uh, tourist activity to a rundle where rundle gets, gets a basic action. Well, the parking issue came up later and then the parking issue was to provide parking and then, you know, I'm not sure how many people are gonna park and ride their bikes into the port, but, you know, they might. And then there's the issue of, uh, commercial, commercial vehicles. And that's where that issue came up was, um, you know, parking of commercial vehicles or buses there. And knowing there's been a history there in the past, and it wasn't a good history, there was a lot of neighborhood pushback on that. I've just, um, written into this, this proposal that, that there be no idle. 'Cause I think that's one of the things that people are concerned about is pollution, noise of pollution.
Well, it's a stink.
Yeah, it is, it's a stink. And if you're idling all day to keep the, the coach cool, I mean, that's a lot of pollution and you got five or six of them doing it once, that's a real problem. So conditional use, point in order, renewable permit, no idle. And if you're gonna call it a, if it's not gonna be just a parking lot, which we, you said you didn't want that, there had to be some amenity to it. And that amenity is becoming a visitor's center with parking, so it has bathrooms.
Yeah, people, yeah, people complain because they come up there and there's no place to-
To go.
Yeah.
Unless they buy something.
Station in the, they feed in the backyard, behind a bush.
Well, that's what we want to avoid.
Well, plus, you know, I, I, I'm on record being opposed to this. I think, I don't know what it does for a rundle, except where would the place be going to take, take a ton, and, and park your car and then get out of a rundle. Doesn't add any commercial advantage, tax-based, minimal. It's so, it, it's good for the port businesses, but it, I, I just have the fear of several of these could be allowed. Because we're not saying only one can allow it. The advantage to the prop owners to pave and allow as much of that, you know, visitor's center as possible. And the buses, the buses are dying for a place within a mile dark square to leave their buses all day. And a rundle could be the dumping site. So it's, it's just not good for the image. If we're gonna do that, let, let it be on Route 1, the ENI district or something, couple of miles, they can manage that. This whole district is low-scale, like Cape Porpoise. Why hasn't Cape Porpoise agreed to allow this? Because it stinks.
Because it stinks. So, so I'm just afraid a rundle pick it up, we're, we're just a dumping ground. So I just have, that's my, that's-
You know, I, I agree with you because the port has a problem with bathrooms and they have a problem with bus parking right now.
Yeah.
If we allow it over here.
They won't build no bathrooms, so-
They'll get a shot of them running back and forth.
Question. So, okay.
What if a restaurant in there?
That would be all right, but just, just to have a parking lot, which is what this really, if this guy's-
Wouldn't work. Never mind.
Question. If that's the case, is parking allowed in DB1 and DB2? If it's not written in, it's not allowed?
Good point, Marty. I think. We can, we can allow parking.
No, it's not written, it's not allowed. It's conditional use.
We, we could, I'd rather have it in BNI rather than down there. I think it's, it's, it's almost the opposite.
I mean, it's not, it's not written, written into the DB1, DB2 or the VI.
But we can do that.
We can put it in.
Put it in for the VI.
Put that in very quickly.
Well, you can put it in VI.
Yeah, 'cause I, I'm not sure-
There's a place to park down there in VI anyway.
I'm not sure that the DB1 or DB2 would be an appropriate place to put that kind of facility, but the VI would be.
Yeah. Where? There's nothing there.
Let them figure it out.
There's, there's nothing in, in the Townhouse District right now. They'd have to build it and pave it.
There is, if you look at a spot, there was the old forefather, yes, there is. 'Cause there's enough room there.
Where is that spot?
Forefather's.
His forefather's.
Oh, yeah.
Either way, no matter where it goes, it's still not-
It's kinda, it's kinda in the swamp.
I agree with Tom, no matter where you put it, not an advantage for a rundle.
Take over the old range.
I don't have a swing room for this.
I gotta know, guys. You know, I can't keep writing the ordinance that-
Well, I'll tell you this, I have this strong, this strong opinion of it. And I don't even live down there. If I lived near there, right away, town, town meeting, this is gonna stink. It will have people doing that. It's not just me. There'll be a dozen people come up and vote the whole thing down.
So put it as a separate warrant, I think.
That's your idea.
Yeah.
It has to be, it has to be that.
I mean, the, the, the use was requested by one person.
One spokesperson.
I don't know if it's one person or one spokesperson, 'cause there's a difference.
Right.
There was only one person there at the meeting, okay?
Okay.
From the group. So that would have to be a spokesperson. It could be the same one too. But at the same time, there weren't seven of them or eight of them.
But there were several comments made about not lining buses.
You can do whatever you want.
At the first, that first presentation that was made by the group when we had, who they had brought in all the residents and stuff.
This is an 11th hour proposal and I haven't heard that committee really talked about-
Which, the economic development?
Economic development. I haven't heard them discuss that, a proposal in the past. And I think at the last hour, I think it, it, it just-
Well, it was in there original and then I thought it went away.
Because of the popular demand, they, they wanted that again.
It's hard to say because the EDC never really, never really took a very hard look at the, um, at the ordinance. I mean, they never got into it the way you guys got into it. They, they, uh, they looked at the concepts of it. They looked at the concept of, you know, making it look like Cape Porpoise, which is why it has some stricter standards than, than any other house had in architectural standards. It had also, the uses were limited, were smaller uses, and the intent was to retain that Cape Porpoisey feel is what I was told. I didn't think that was a good thing to put in there because that's for another community. So I didn't use that as a banner, on the banner there, but, um, that's what, that was the direction I was getting in. And so the, the, the commercial parking lot thing is, is, uh, I'm not sure. You know, I, I, we got pushback from that at one of the public hearings. Those who went to that public hearing remembers we got some pushback from that. Um, the argument was that those people weren't, didn't necessarily, they lived right outside of that district, but that doesn't mean they're not voters or potentially in that, so.
Well, the other thing is, you can try and have, with quote-unquote, you wanna talk to your technology, vehicle doesn't have to be running to try and have air conditioning. So, but you can have a generator.
Well.
Which is not the diesel, so it doesn't poll.
Doesn't make noise.
Most of them, you don't even hear.
And then all 53 decibel level I can hear.
Well, how should I proceed, gentlemen? I mean, I wanted to tell a lot of them to write that, that needed to go into something else. So this is the problem. I mean, I, I, I need firm direction from this board because we don't have time to experiment anymore. I need, you know, you made a decision, you said put it in, so I've written the, you can make a decision on that next, next week. Let's put it that way, all right? If you wanna reverse yourself, fine, but I've written the standards for this facility. And I've gone to other towns, I've looked in other locations and-
For a bus?
No. For a tourist.
Visitor's center.
Visitor's center with, with associated paid parking.
I think John had the right idea. Make it a separate warrant article. Pull it out and make it a separate warrant article. Because we don't-
Well, if you think it's gonna fail, why are we doing it then?
Because if we need it-
Why are we putting this use in? You gotta keep somebody happy.
We, we don't know if it's gonna fail, but we don't wanna risk the entire article failing because of it. I mean, it, it might go through, but do we wanna risk the entire Townhouse article on the fact that it's there? I think it would be better to, to list that out separately.
I would, I would even suggest we don't even put it in there. No, we just, I would, I would-
Well, you guys, you guys are gonna have to vote.
We voted last week.
You voted last week.
We voted last week.
You can change it.
How did they vote last week?
We voted to include the commercial, the visitor's center and commercial.
If, if, if we voted on it last week to put that in there, then I think we need to leave it there. Because, because we can't keep changing our votes every time something goes up.
So, that's what I did. And it's a no idle zone, so. And you, you guys can always, if you put it in and you feel strongly that it shouldn't go, you can always put a recommended, you don't approve it, no town won't.
It's only part of one article.
It's separated, no.
Right, no, you just, you gotta separate this one out.
I, I'd have to see what the standards are, 'cause-
Yeah, I'll send them to you.
Okay. 'Cause what, what I, what, I would prefer, and again, I'm just one person speaking, but I prefer not to have three acres of pavement so that buses can come in. I think it's just the issue, a lot of these visitor's centers have maybe 10 spots, you know. People come in, they get their, they take a leak and they head, they head into the, the attraction, um, so if-
Well, the state ones actually have a lot of pavement 'cause they do have trucks.
Oh, yeah.
Right, the state ones do, but is that what we want? Is that, is it being built, are we allowing this just so buses can park here?
No.
I, that's what I think, that's why we're doing this. That's the only, that's the only reason why we have this is 'cause bus parking was proposed and-
Well, if the trolley were to set up a shuttle from that parking lot into, into Dock Square, then that business opportunity could exist, which could actually be beneficial to that district if it were to happen.
Only if the town charges such parking per hour and the town benefits by it.
Then we would have to mandate. This is, this is privately owned.
It'll pay for itself.
Nope. This is what they said, privately owned. This is what was already discussed last week.
Okay, so you're gonna, moving along, we're gonna make a special line of special-
Yeah, the issues are gonna be the DB2 and the conditional uses.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
And, uh, not all the conditional uses are gonna be done. We still have taverns. I still haven't tackled taverns. That's always been a conditional use. And taverns, you know, are, are an issue. I don't have direction from you on that and I will give you a proposal. You guys can make a decision on that.
I heard San Gil was looking for new ways.
Perfect!
Right next to Bentley's.
Yeah.
Right, so is Hooters.
Bring your clientele.
So is Hooters.
Portland police, too.
Okay, I, I just have one item. Jamie, when you do your minutes from the sidewalk?
Yep.
I don't know how you have Bob listed, but he was there as a reporter this evening.
Uh, from today? Yeah, put in parentheses, number is a bug. Put him down with the rest of us, but then put in parentheses, bug.
Can I ask you a question? Before you, well, maybe, I have a question about the, uh, the E911, I think you sent it out.
Yes, yes.
Is that a plan of recording?
Yes, it is a planners' report, which I will ask you for your input. Okay. Okay. Planner's report, I was given a, planner's report, the first thing is I was given a, uh, uh, the town manager gave you the E911 ordinance, that the town has been, um, um, required to, uh, well, that's not required, MMA is our insurer. MMA is also, uh, um, wants to essentially standardize the many ordinances that every town needs to have, and one of which is the 911 ordinance. And, uh, so the manager has put that, put that before the council or before the selectmen and I don't think that has to go, that doesn't, does that have to go town name?
No, I don't know.
I don't think it-
No, it says selectmen's ordinance.
So selectmen's ordinance. So the selectmen have to do that, but before they, they make a decision on it, they wanna get input from the planning boards, do any, any omissions or revisions or have we gotten one comment?
Do we need it?
Do we need to have a E911? Yeah.
Mr. Joe, are we having problems about finding places?
Oh, yeah, because we can't get people to put their, their house numbers up on their houses.
And it's also house names and it's-
Naming the roads, it's a problem.
That being said, will MMA give us a discount on the insurance if we pass this? Because if they won't, why bother?
It's gonna be incentive. They won't raise your insurance rates.
No, because part of, part of a thing like that, it causes a lot of turmoil and, you know, it changes house numbers, it changes addresses, it causes all kinds of problems. So, my question is, if it's needed, if we, if there's a problem, then we do it. If there's no problem, I can't understand why we'd go through the exercise.
Question, also, the fact is, the fact, we've had this in place, okay? And we've named the streets with the owner and everything else. We have given the addresses on housing and everything. Why do we have to put another one in place? 'Cause we already have it in town.
Well, it's, it's revisions to the existing 911.
'Cause you said we didn't have any.
Well, this is a formal policy.
It's a formal policy.
That's what the selectmen are gonna do.
Right, 'cause the 911 number change has already gone into effect.
And that was my question for the majority, and especially businesses. This would impact, if we haven't done this north, south, east, west numbering, you know, of the roads. But if we've been doing this for a while, most of the businesses already have it. We're not talking a huge number of people affected, right? But if we hadn't have done that, that would affect potentially every single person in the town.
I think the businesses have been well-numbered. I don't think that's the issue. The issue has been more on family divisions and on, um, on new lots, lot divisions and on old roads where they never bothered to post numbers. Remember, in your DB1 ordinance, you require numbers to be posted on, on, on business sites, which is, um, it's gonna be a huge help to the fire department. Especially when they have to respond at night when lights are off, um, or when, when you can't really see it, a foggy night, you can't see, you can't see numbers on houses, can't see numbers on businesses. Where you can see it is you look for it on mailboxes, you look for it on business sites. And that's, I think we're gonna be helping that, but we do need to codify a complete policy that the selectmen have adopted that is in conformance with the standards that our insurer wants to have. And, uh, it just, it ensures that we follow the same procedures that fire departments are gonna be doing in other towns. And therefore, since our town is heavily dependent on mutual aid, as most smaller rural communities are, our mutual aid companies need to be able to know what they're looking for, be assured when they come and support. If these guys are out on a, on a, on a- If these guys are out on a, on a, an extrication call, and a fire comes, the room contents comes in another place, and Bedford has to respond, or Kennebunk has to be responded. They need to have the confidence of knowing how to find the location. And G I, GPS is not always accurate. A lot of times, it's very inaccurate. The numbers are important, being able to see them, and the location, requiring people to come to them is very important. And then, of course, giving tea. And right now, Wendy kinda, Wendy kinda fix it's own.
Right, Wendy and Roger do this together.
Yeah, they do this together, and, and they do a good job, but you know, this-
They will continue to do this, you know, it's still there, there's still the order.
Yeah, and it's tough.
The numbering, you know, criteria, where it says it's every twenty-five to fifty feet, I think that's how they're doing it now. They go out and measure, and then the street number is assigned to the home or the business or whatever. So I don't think that's gonna change. So I don't think that it's gonna change everybody's street number.
Which is codified, right.
Right.
That being said, I've been a, from the road department, I do not have a, that has the number on it, because the town has successfully knocked it over for six years. So I took it out and said, "I'm not putting one back in."
Don't bring it in a town right away.
It's not in the town right away. It was on a mailbox, and it just kept getting knocked over and destroyed. I won't put one back up.
Use your whip.
Right. This one talks about like number of structures, you know, like about the building.
So I'm doing this here.
It's about the only thing that we probably stopped it.
No, Grand does.
Grand does too.
I don't wanna spend that kind of money.
It's cheaper than A thirty-six.
Okay, and also?
Yes, the, I alluded to it earlier. On Tuesday night, the complaint committee met, and we went through the-
Did you want a position from the board to the selectmen, and how you started that out?
Yes, I did, thank you.
I'm sorry, yes?
I just had a CD-ROM with there, yes. I, you know, we just kinda left it. Yeah, the, the, actually, the, the town manager would like any kind of response and comments from this board, or an action from this board, before he takes it to the selectmen. This is a courtesy. He wants to make sure that all the boards that are involved in these, are involved in these kind of issues, have a say in it. And he would like to know about it now, rather than have, have a show up at the, at the selectmen's meeting when they have a public hearing.
Well, I think, someone asked Heather his question. Yeah, I'm not sure. Is this saying that, is this applying to new roads that will be northly or eastly, or is this changing existing numbers?
I believe it's the same as it has been, isn't it?
I can't say that with one hundred percent certainty, but I believe.
I think that this is a process for-
I guess if you really have a question, you should ask Todd to discuss that.
Okay. If the selectmen committee removed the special note, changing existing numbers now, there may be a handful that, that might have to happen, I'm not sure. But again, there's nothing today, and we have no ordinance on that today, none whatsoever.
But how has it been done?
This says it will go every twenty-five feet from one border to the other. But again, that they've been following, and Wendy and Roger have kinda been following this, but we just have nothing in the books that says this is what we've been doing. And the MMA is saying, "You guys, you need something in your works."
But how has it been done for the last twelve or better years? Because it's said-
It's a formality.
Yeah, I mean, they've been following along in the same concept, it's just never been, never been covered.
Oh, we gotta submit, we gotta submit names, do everything like on the form that you had before.
Yeah. And that, that process will still occur. You still have to get approved for your name, your private way name, or if you, or you actually name your driveway, you have to get that approved by the same process.
Well, that, that is a request in here not to name driveways.
There is a request, I mean, people have named in the past.
True.
And this, this is saying all, all owners will, shall display the, the numbers. Is, is that gonna be enforceable, or is it-
Yeah.
Yes. Because somebody could get a certificate of occupancy, for example, they would have to display their nine one one number wherever this says, or Jim would not necessarily issue them a certificate of occupancy.
That's where I'm not clear, is this for, for new buildings, or I don't see anything about new buildings, it just says-
Understood, like new developments, new construction.
Six, compliance.
Well, they're, they're not gonna be able to tell people that they currently have a house, that, you know, if you don't display your number, we're, we're not gonna give you a CO.
No, not, you already got your CO.
I've already got my CO.
No, but don't, don't come bitching in the town if your, your house catches on fire and they can't find the damn thing. Come on, guys.
I have a number on my mailbox because of that, but-
Well, not necessarily.
The way I read this, the way I read this says, "All owners of structures shall, on and before the effective date, display and maintain," so it doesn't say the new buildings.
Well, why wouldn't you want it?
But we already-
No, so I'm just asking the enforcement. I have one in my mail, I'm not, I, I do it already.
You know, I think it's an issue with fire-
I'm thinking like a voter, you're gonna get this question, to be, others will ask this question at a meeting. Are you gonna find me, or is the selectman-
We'll have a public hearing on this, and then we'll vote.
So what's the enforcement, what's the enforcement gonna be?
I think we already have that ordinance. I think we already have the ordinance that says you have to have four inch high letters, or four inch high numbers on your house so that we can find you. This is, this is nothing new. It's already there. Because we've been trying, from the fire department point of view, to get people to put this stinking number up. It, it is, it, it's codified in some ways, we just can't get them to do it.
Well, really and truly, the, I mean, I see it as, the burning building is not the concern. It's an emergency, it's a tech and release emergency, or something like that, well, not as obvious.
I've had a patient actually walk down a, walk down the hill to the ambulance, because we couldn't find your place.
So it's really public safety, I think, consistency in the numbering.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to the, to the board of selection to not proceed with this.
I'll second that.
So I can proceed any?
Yeah, they want to proceed anyway.
I asked them. If you had comments on how to, I think the intent was, if you had comments on how to change it.
I just wanted to move this thing along.
We got lots of comments, you noticed.
I didn't write nothing down.
I did, I did find a little spelling error on section five eight. The number, all number origin shall be moved to, from the border. It should be E O R D.
So it's not just you.
You gotta do words best.
So no A there, right?
Thank you.
I like that.
Good job, son.
Probably wouldn't know.
From the border, E O A R.
I didn't know, I didn't like that.
When's dinner? Yeah, getting back to, to the enabling legislation that makes all this fly, because everything we would, we've been doing would have been for naught if the complaint committee had not come through. Because if that does not pass, remember, nothing we've done passes regardless of how much everybody wants, wants it to go. The complaint committee sat down, we found a number of problems, and we went through the entire volume one of the complaint, and made sure that all of the changes that were proposed by the complaint committee at the suggestion of this board were consistent throughout all of the district specifications, the uses, and the design standards. And then also made sure that the goals and objectives and the policies were all changed according to, for instance, there are little sleepers in there, a policy that says, "Make sure that no building in the CCS district gets, is larger than fifteen thousand square feet." Oh, that kind of is so bad. That, that's a little contradictory to all the work that we've done. So we went, weeded them all out, and that was all done on Tuesday night. And then today and yesterday, I made all these changes per board, and it is now in its final document. It's going for you guys, I guess, to include in the warrant. But it's being advertised for a public hearing on the fifteenth of May. They have a thirty-day public hearing.
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Well, it's what we had on the calendar, the fifteenth is there.
It's a Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
Thirteen, my mistake. It's on the thirteenth. And so, if you have any comments, I will make sure that I will send out to you volume one, so you all have a digital copy of it. Unless you want me to print out a copy for you next week, I can do that.
Take a digital till it passes.
Yeah. Digital's easy. So in, in terms of other things, we have subdivision coming, a cluster subdivision coming. There's a lot more activity, a lot more people are coming in and asking about doing developments. I have proposed for daycare centers, not homes, but centers. Couple other people looking to do some things, so things, there's some activity that's picking up. So I, I would imagine we're gonna be seeing a lot more applications coming this year. We also have a, a lot of our excess capacity of lots have been, are being chewed up right now, so I expect more simple issues in the future. That's all I have for the planners' report.
Have you picked up the calendar?
Yes, Richard?
We do have it.
Oh, I have it. Are the stickers on it?
Oh, I have the check off links.
Okay. These are the calendars. This is basically our calendar of events, on what we need to do to get this thing to town meeting. And tells you when the drop dead dates are, and kindly put this together, and even applied color. Thank you, Ian. So this, this will be our guide in the next two weeks. Plus, we have public hearings, you know, obviously, we're gonna have lots of public hearings. By the way, the public hearing is going to be really interesting, since we have to spend, send, class, uh, first-class mail notification to every property owner in the districts. Just about a hundred and-
I'll be down on twenty-eight.
Planning board meeting on the fifteenth?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
You got a fifteenth here, May?
No, 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 that's set public hearing date for May fifteenth.
Yes, true.
And so on May fifteenth, it says planning board, public hearing meeting.
So a public hearing.
Yep.
Yes, that's your public hearing before the poker.
But it's not a planning board meeting.
Well, it is a-
Well, it is a planning board meeting, because your meeting is a board to hold your public hearing. So it is, yes, it is a planning board meeting. It's not like a regular schedule.
So we have a forum meeting next week. We have a meeting next Thursday. We already need to get a lot of, I will give you everything you need to, to soak this up. There's a lot of stuff I've gotta do with the ordinance in order to make it into a warrant situation.
I will be here next week. I will not be here on the twenty-fourth, nor will I be here on May eighteenth.
But you will be here on the fifteenth.
I will be here on the fifteenth and the twenty-second.
I will be here on the fifteenth.
Yeah, I'll be here on the fifteenth.
Okay, so you can share the meeting, all right? So what's the town report deadline? Does that affect us at all?
Um, it affects me. It affects, well-
I have the regular ones.
Right, and the thing of it is, is that all of these have to be done as appendixes, so they have to be available at town law for residents who are new to it.
So that's all, all the different courts of law, different departments? You ready to go?
Right, I mean, we should have a ready review at the end.
I'm on a count, like, that week.
Yeah, I'm out the week before.
Do we have it on the twenty-fourth? Because I, I'm not gonna be here on the twenty-fourth.
I'm out of town.
So we got two that are not gonna be here, who else is gonna be here? April?
April twenty-fourth.
April twenty-fourth.
Yeah, April.
Yeah. I'm out of town, too.
Three.
I'm here.
And you're here, four. So that's, that's for the public hearing, because remember, you got Kate, Kate, and these two gentlemen that can't be there, can't, can't vote, so. You gonna be there?
On the forty-fourth?
Yeah. You are, so there's two, Marty, three.
I'm here, Roger's four.
You got four. Tomorrow, on Tues, on next Thursday, do we have everybody coming? Who's not coming next Thursday, so I know?
I'm here.
Okay.
I'll break up the afternoon, so I can-
My appointments.
That'd be perfect. Tom?
I'm on the zoning watchout.
Here we go.
I have a lot to my-.
You ever be here? Okay.
Maybe we can try the final.
I don't know my appointment is.
So we got four anyway, right?
Yeah.
Okay.